All right, board members, we are live on Zoom and also live streaming to YouTube. Still don't see Director Shannon, but the other directors and the two student reps are here. Thank you both student reps. I do apologize again in person for for not getting info to you until this morning. That was just a bad on my part as the temporary secretary. I apologize.
Well, thanks, Greg. We're just waiting on Brian still, huh?
Yes.
Greg, I'll just wait like 30 seconds and then we'll go. Is that fair?
Director Shannon just came on and so we have got everything ready to go.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Well, welcome everybody. Call to me in the order. A little bit different kind of meeting. Lisa Fryley is going to be helping us quite a bit tonight. It's a not a regular scheduled meeting. We'll have another one of those on the 14th. And Greg, thank you for all your work, you know, putting us together and appreciate that very much. I asked Director DeHart if he would start us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So can you do that, Trevor?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director DeHart. Appreciate that. Lisa Fryley, I'm gonna let you speak first and then you know, if you don't mind talking about the first item there.
No, I'll go ahead and get us started. This is Lisa. For those that don't know me, I've been working with the district as some of their in-house council work. And so I've spent the last week or so working with Chair Brown to try and begin the process for finding a replacement for the superintendent. The first step that I'd like for us to have a conversation about and is kind of an in-between spot because it's going to take us a little while to find a replacement. Tonight you'll hear from some search firms. We have two firms here that are going to talk to you about how they would handle it. I gave them a handful of questions, which I'll outline for those when we get there so that you don't forget what the questions are that I gave them that they're supposed to be able to address tonight. And then you'll be able to ask them some additional questions, but while they're doing the search, there really needs to be somebody kind of taking care of some of the administrative type organizational type duties and educational duties out of the superintendent's office. And so one of the things we talked about when Chair Brown and I started this conversation was the possibility of reaching out to a sitting superintendent and identifying if that individual was willing to provide some limited services, usually a couple of days a week for a period of time to basically be that acting superintendent person and be the liaison or the contact between the board and the district. And so at this point, I think one of the conversations that came up was to have any, it was engage in a conversation with the ESD superintendent, Dr. Dave Navatney. He has served in that capacity for a number of school districts, including Jefferson a couple of years ago before Superintendent Keppener was hired out there. So it's something that the ESD has done before in support of its local regional school districts. And so I coordinated an opportunity for Chair Brown to have a conversation with Dr. Navatney about whether or not it would be a good fit potentially to give you an update, see if it would work and would be something that we could then move forward on potentially at our next meeting to kind of officially move forward with that. Dave, could you give us just a kind of an update as to the conversation you had and how that went?
Yes. First of the whole board, I'd like to say thank you to Lisa. She's been awesome to deal with. She's taken on a lot here in this transition, so relying on her expertise a great deal. So Lisa, you've been great to work with. Thank you for all your hard work behind the scenes. I think I can't speak for everybody, but I know we all respect you and we appreciate all the work you've done in the past and are doing now for the board. I met with Lisa, we can have two weeks ago and really been leaning really hard on her for her advice or expertise. So we can have this meeting to start bringing it, you know, back to the whole board. And so she recommended Dr. Dave Navatney to be our intern. So last night him and I had about an hour long conversation and yeah, I didn't know what to expect. I mean, I'd never met Dr. Navatney. It was a excellent conversation with somebody who's well-versed in in all aspects of education in the state of Oregon. He's a very, very nice person, but he's, the thing you pick up really quick is he's, he has excellent questions. He has got a full plate with WSD. But they do this to come alongside school districts all over. I believe he said he, WSD works with about 120 different school districts in some level or not. Sometimes it's smaller, sometimes it's bigger. But WSD is quite large. When I went down to their offices, it's a very big operation. He is in charge of all that and he is somebody who's willing to come in and give us a couple of days a week, but then he would always take phone calls and help us through this process. We have about three weeks leading into Christmas break. He and I talked about how Christmas break goes where we have that, you know, about 15 days or so where the schools pretty much shut down unless you're in winter athletics. And that works pretty good into his schedule, so that's kind of a good thing right there. And then he's willing to stay into January to help us through the process as the search firms would come back with potential candidates. He has no charge to the Newburgh School District. So there's no dollars out the door. It's quite generous. He is somebody I think you guys will all find to be kind of like Lisa, somebody that we can all agree on that will be here for the Newburgh School District and you and as well as our our teachers, our classified, our parents, our students. He asks very pointed questions. He's very direct. But very friendly how he asks those questions. He knows our situation quite well. He knows that we're you know, he knows where we're at. He's, he's, he's kept up on the Newburgh School District. So he's pretty aware of all that. Lisa, I don't know if there's any more to say. I just, I know as a board, you know, we're a part on a lot of issues, but I think he's somebody that all seven of us can work with quite easily. And he is again willing to come and help us out. So Lisa, I think that's kind of the gist of that conversation.
Yeah. Thanks, Dave. I think Dave's right. I did get a little bit of an update. Just to be clear so that there's most of you know I work out of the ESD. I'm employed by the ESD. So Dave Navatney ultimately, Dr. Navatney is ultimately, I guess, since he's a superintendent would be kind of like a person who is responsible for me to some degree. But I do, my practice is very independent of him and he has no oversight or control over the work I do, the legal work that I do for the school district such as yourself. So I want to assure you that there, in that particular sense, we have a division of labor, so to, so to speak. He did share with me that he had had a conversation with Chair Brown and that in that conversation, he had indicated that really from his perspective, he felt that the best way that he could support the school district would be supporting students and staff and focus on the teaching and learning and supporting district administration and day-to-day operations that they're all having to kind of pick up and distribute amongst themselves right now. And he could be there as well as supporting the school board as you go through this process of selecting a superintendent and just trying to kind of create a little bit of, you know, just a quiet sense of moving forward, I guess would be the best way to talk about it. He is not going to, he has asked to not be involved in any of the decision-making that we make regarding any of our legal activities that are currently pending. And I think that's fine. We have other staff that we have relied upon. Both Derek and Nikki have been very supportive in helping me as I've worked through a number of those issues as well as Tyler. So I think we have the staff available to, to handle those without him having to take on some of those duties. He does want some sort of written agreement between the Newburgh School District and the ESD. And I believe he shared that with Chair Brown as part of it so that it would be very clear as to the things that he would be doing and the things he would not be doing. So I anticipate that he will be working on some, some draft of something that you would have an opportunity to review prior to making a final decision potentially next Tuesday on the 14th. Does anyone have any questions for me though? This is, this is kind of a stopgap measure to help create some stability in that position and to also meet some of the legal requirements we have of having to have a superintendent who signs certain reports and various things that may come due during the, the window where we are looking for a superintendent. No question?
How long, how long is he willing to, to do this? I mean, we, we, we need to be thoughtful when we're, we're looking for, for superintendent. It could be, it's not a, a quick process.
He, he has committed to 60 days, Rebecca. So I would interpret that as that we probably get to somewhere to mid, maybe late February, right? That he would be able to serve.
I have a question. Dave, you mentioned that he had pointed questions. What were those questions? I mean, I'm a little hesitant. I don't know who he is. I want to know more about how his scope on education is. What did you get from that conversation?
Ah, yeah, no, good question. He, like I said, he's, he's really a smart man. He has filled lots of different roles. He understands that, you know, we're in a tough situation. His questions were more around what he can do, you know, he, he's really focused on teaching and learning. And he wants to, you know, as an intern come in and focus on, on really helping the staff and students, you know, on, on that type of thing. So there's a, as smooth as possible transition. I think, you know, his questions were more in that realm, like it wasn't so much about us as, as much as what he can do, you know, to come in and help and his, with his specialties and expertise. He's very aware of pretty much everything going on in education in Oregon. He knows, you know, just about everybody. He's right there with Derek Brown. I mean, he, he knows our, some of our staff already. He is somebody who has been education a long time and he's seen lots of different angles on it. I didn't get a sense and that is where he was maybe more. He, he really wants to just come and help us. I mean, that was, how can I help you? That was kind of what he kept coming back to is how can I help you?
Will there be an opportunity for him to, to talk personally with, with each of us so that we can get a feeling for him or will we be able to meet him before we he's presented to us at the next meeting? How, how would we get to, to understand who he is?
Board member Pyros, yeah, I think, let, let's talk about what might make sense, right? In terms of trying to arrange something, would it make sense for me to try and because we're not going to take action on this tonight, right? The idea is to have a conversation, then come back and deal with it during our regular meeting on the 14th. So would it make sense for me to try and make him available during the meeting so that you can all like talk to him before any action or discussion about action is taken? Or would you prefer me to try and arrange some time for, there, there would be six of you. So it would be a little more time consuming to try and get him to reach out to all six of you between now and next week.
I would prefer to have it at the meeting, I mean, additional meetings to an already complicated schedule is challenging. So because that's already in our schedule that we're going to meet on the 14th, I just wouldn't be ready to make a decision without meeting him or knowing what he, a little bit more about him.
Yeah, board member Penya, I totally understand. I think we can, I'll work with him to try and accommodate that into the calendar. And I think I saw, Tyler, I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, that's okay. Chair Brown, if it's okay with you, it might be good for Lisa to, to give a little bit of background on the Willamette Education Service District. I don't know if everyone here knows that the Education Service Districts are basically a school district that does not have students. They serve to do all of these back office type expertise and staffing and whatnot. So he's there, he's full-time. He's a state employee, just like school district staff would be in essence. So he's already in this kind of a role, just not with, over a school with students. Lisa, do you want, Chair Brown, can, can she explain a little bit of that? She knows more than I do, but I think that might be helpful in this context. So people can have a understanding of who he is.
No, I appreciate that. Lisa, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah. I, I have been with the ESD. I've been, I, I've worked with Willamette ESD over my 30 years, but I've been employed by them, working in this legal services program for over four years now. So the ESD, Willamette ESD, WESD serves Marion, Polk and Yamhill County. So right now, all of, all of your district already receives some services from, besides myself, you receive other services from the ESD. And it is correct that they are, they're a very atypical school. So a lot of our services are focused on a lot of those specialties that are kind of hard to find in staff. So we have a lot of autism behavior, school psychs, audiologist, speech and learning nurses. A lot of the districts get their nurses through us. So in that particular instance, we have licensed personnel and classified personnel that he is responsible for the oversight of. Willamette ESD is also slightly different than some of the other ESDs because we actually do run some educational programs. So we have an early childhood program that runs out of both Marion and Yamhill and Polk County. We also provide services to the state hospital and to a variety of the correctional units. So we actually have like classroom teachers in those types of capacities. So we are responsible for providing basically K-12, pre-K curriculum and educational components as well. Dr. Navatney has a regular meeting with all of the local regional superintendents. He is, he and the ESD are very committed to service. He sees himself very much as an educational leader. And that really is where he wants, and he truly, where his heart kind of lands in terms of believing that that the job that he needs to come in and do is that which provides education to all those cute little kids that are out there, even the high school ones that are running around trying to be, trying to be educated. I think it's a great idea. So, and he has been with the ESD in some capacity either as an assistant. He, he started as a humans resources director and assistant superintendent and transitioned into the superintendent position. But he has been with the ESD since before I left OSBA. So I would bet that he's been there probably 10 or 15 years. So he's got a lot of longevity and he has built some very good relationships with the superintendents in the three region areas. So I think he has shown the ability. And by the way, the, the Marion Polk and Yamhill County is quite a diverse group of superintendents. You know, there is both rural as well as very much suburban, urban type schools. So I think he'll have a capacity to be able to work with a lot of different people and meet them where they come from. But I do agree with both Director Pyros and Penya. I think we can arrange a time for you guys to have a, have a conversation with him before a decision is made. He is actually in the middle of the, yes, the ESD board meeting is always on the first Tuesday every month, which is why he was unavailable to come today. And I actually thought it made more sense to have this conversation without him necessarily sitting here watching us have this conversation and to answer whatever questions you might have. And then we can go back and arrange a time for you to kind of meet him and ask whatever questions you have on your mind that will help make you feel better about whatever choice you end up wanting to make.
Lisa, I, I appreciate that. And I also want to just thank you for your time spent on this and on supporting our board. I've never had the privilege of meeting Dr. Navatney, but I do look forward to that because I agree with Directors Penner and Pyros and the, Penya, I'm sorry, and Pyros. And that I feel very uncomfortable moving forward until we at least can meet the person. But I, I understand that there, I can imagine that there has been a lot of work going into this and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Penner. Any other questions from other board members? Remember Shannon, Powell, DeHart?
No, I was just gonna say, I think it's fine to just hear from them at the next meeting, meeting that way.
Yeah, one, one question, Lisa. You know, you talked about his, his experience with WESD. What about prior to joining WESD?
Yeah, prior to joining the ESD, he was a teacher. Obviously, most administrators come from being teachers. But he eventually went into administration, but most of that experience was out in the Dallas area. So he was a building principal out in Dallas. I believe it was that at the high school and worked his way up through the administrative ranks there. So he has served Board Member DeHart in a K-12 capacity, in addition to the K-12 programs that he runs within the ESD, which are definitely smaller than what the Newburgh K-12 program is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I will, I will connect with him tomorrow and arrange for him to be present at our meeting on the 14th so that you folks will have an opportunity to ask whatever questions. You know, ask him about like what his K-12 experience has been, what did you do, what did he teach? I, I can't even remember what he taught. I've known him only as an administrator. So I've heard stories of his years as a building level administrator and a teacher, but it has been a while since I've heard those. I don't really recall the specifics of them. It's probably better for you to hear it from him anyway.
Just, just a quick question. Rowan and Maddie, do you have any questions about anything that we're talking about in the process that we're going through here?
Um, I have a question more broadly. I know that I was reviewing the board policy for recruiting a superintendent and then also the packet agenda. And it said that public comment was an important part and a necessary part for doing that. So do we plan on incorporating that into future meetings where we are talking, talking about the same topic?
Good question, Rowan. You're talking about Policy CBB?
Yes.
Yes. Dave, I'll, I'll let you, Chair Brown, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, we're tonight, you know, is a special meeting to discover some of these things we're trying to, to move forward. Where Mr. Friday is helping us with the, the intern and then the search committee. Next week will be a, on the 14th will be a regular scheduled board meeting and we'll be back. We haven't had one for a while and we'll get back to public comments in that meeting. And then on the 16th of this month, we're trying to put together a meeting where we would have nothing but public comments on the superintendent search. And so that would be a meeting where we, we'd go a couple hours and, you know, hopefully we can get a couple minutes per speaker and hopefully the goal, you know, we can get as many as possible, up to 50. And so that would be on the 16th. So we can have public meetings on the 14th at a regular meeting and then kind of focus on the superintendent on the 16th. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I look forward to the public aid.
Okay. I think, you know, that, that's, no, it's great. We've just been a while since we've gotten together and it's, you know, it's been, it's been a little bit interesting for you guys. So we'll have, the next meeting will be more agenda-based where we have things we're going, kind of going through. Tonight's more of a, kind of a work session kind of meeting. I think you'll find the next meeting to be more, a little more formal when we, we go through the, the comments. You know, you'll hear from you guys and the, and the board members will make their comments. We'll hear from the public. So it'll be more like a regular board meeting. So that makes sense? Cool. Okay. Lisa, I think that kind of covers it unless we had another question there from the students.
But I have another question. We're on the topic of, of these meetings. I know that I have mentioned it before, but in future consideration for meetings, I would appreciate consideration of our schedules because on the 16th I will be out of town and I don't know that I will be able to listen to the public comment, which I do appreciate hearing from the public. So just another side note for future meetings.
And Dave, we will be recording that public comment session, right?
Yes, I'm sure we will.
So let's, because I, part of what Chair Brown, is it fine if I move into the second part of our agenda, which is beginning to move into a conversation with our, our possible search firms? Because Rowan, that's really the company where, I mean, whoever we hire to manage the search that we go through will be responsible for helping to coordinate our public comment and feedback part of the process. So I'm always a, and as Chair Brown and I have talked, it's always good to like listen to some of the experts in the field who do this, you know, for a living to kind of get some idea as to how they would like to handle it. Which leads me, I'm going to share with you guys the five questions that I sent to the search candidates who are here tonight, which is Rob Hess from BTC and Doug Nelson from McPherson and Jacobson. I hope I got both of those right. So one question was, what timeline would you propose in order to conduct an effective executive search? When preparing a timeline, be aware that there is interest in filling the vacant position as quickly and as efficiently as possible with the hopes of a filling of that position in January, which was a direction I got from the board chair. I then posed a second question for them is what challenges are there, if any, to complete a search in January? And how do you intend to address those challenges? So there, they should give you some idea of what a timeline would look like, what timeline they would propose and how to address any challenges to that timeline. Including what process would they use to obtain community input? And to address the timing of the search that's going to occur with a holiday break in the middle? Because there's going to be a period of time where it will be difficult to engage the community in, in conversation and discussion, right? A fourth question was what process do you propose to use in developing the qualities and qualifications to be used in recruiting potential candidates? Because that's another element of our policy that we're required to go through some process for developing those. And finally, I asked them, how do they intend to encourage candidates to apply for the position in Newburgh? And finally, um, I asked them, how do they intend to encourage candidates to apply for the position in Newburgh? So I've asked them to address timing timelines, the um, what they think would be the most effective and how to deal with the holiday break and to get community engagement and to encourage candidates to apply. Now, the mere fact that I have given them these five questions does not, please do not interpret that, that that prevents you from asking any other question that you believe is relevant in helping to um, make your decision as to which firm you believe would best meet the district's needs in um, conducting the search, okay? But it was intended to give them something to start with in terms of a conversation for um, tonight's meeting. Okay?
I've got a quick question, just a clarification. So because I've not been a part of any discussion around any of this, I am confused on the timeline. I I've been a part of both an interim search and a permanent search. And I know that those can take months because there's actually a lot of steps and a lot of involvement and a lot of time on the board's behalf and on staff's behalf. So are you proposing that we're looking at hiring a firm next week and then starting a search and having a permanent by di- January? Is that my correct?
The direction I was given to try and see if the search was, if the firm was willing and able to present a process that would allow for that search to um, be conducted, Board Member Penner, within about six weeks, right? Now, each of these candidates are, each of these firms are going to have to address that issue in terms of whether they think that is a doable function. And if so, how they intend to do that. Um, one of um, the things that I didn't even uh, think about at the time um, that originally, and I apologize Chair Brown, I, it didn't even hit my radar at the time he and I had our original conversations. There is a um, it did hit my radar when I was kind of pulling stuff together for tonight. There is an administrative rule that is in place for licensed um, in licensed employees through the Teacher Standards Practices Commission that requires a sixty day notice um, to employers. So for if a teacher were to leave the Newburgh School District, they would have to provide sixty days notice to Newburgh prior to leaving their employment with the Newburgh School District, or else they would face potential um, disciplinary action from T S P C. And so I think that issue will need to be addressed as well. Um, based on the timeline that there are, there's some interest in discussing, but none of this has been um, Board Member Penner, none of this has been set in stone, no decisions have been made. Um, all we're doing is trying to focus the conversation and get some information and it gives us a starting point for the conversation.
Well, that that brings up a, I have a point of clarification. Because of the situation we're in, I I would like to understand um, what has gone on before, so we can, we can go forward in a better manner. And um, according to policy B B A A, um, individual board members authority and and responsibility. It states that a board member has the authority to speak on behalf of the board when authorized by specific board motions. And there has been some, some um, actions by board members that I want to understand what board motions they were authorized to do that. Because I wasn't involved in that and I just want to understand when did these um, board motions happen? And I'm talking about when, when Chair Brown approached a um, superintendent on October sixth and offered him the position of superintendent. And then on November eleventh, when Chair Brown and Director um, DeHart approached Dr. Joe Morlock to resign from this, his position. And then again, when Chair Brown and Director Shannon approached Dr. Derek Brown to offer him the position of superintendent. I just want to know what specific board at, board motion authorized these actions so that um, because I wasn't aware, I, did I miss the meeting? Um, Brandy, did, were you at the meeting, Inez?
Well, Rebecca, I don't know what the source of your material is there, but I never approached Dr. Brown about the, being the interim superintendent. So I think you might just not have your back straight.
Okay, but but did, did Chair Brown approach him? And on what, what authorization?
Well, the board chair has authorization beyond that of a normal board member.
No, no, they do not. Not unless it's by board action, which none of this has been.
So I just want to make sure that we're, we're doing these things in, in the, i- in an orderly and proper um, fashion and and according to policy. So, so like when, when Lisa says that, that um, she was given the direction we needed it, the suggestion that it was um, to be done in January. I was glad to hear it wasn't a dir- uh, wasn't a directive, but a suggestion. So I just, I would really like to hear from Dave, what authority, what specific authoritative board action or motion took place for you to do these things and and um, what, was it a meeting that I missed? Because if I missed it, I'm sorry to my, to my constituents.
The uh, Board Member, uh, Board Member Pyros, if I may um, not, I will let Chair Brown respond um, to the question you presented. I I want to clarify that I don't believe um, that the conversations that I had with Chair Brown um, ever um, he, he, as you identified, as I tried to make clear, it it was like, this is what we'd like to look at. Like, could you tap, could you talk to people and see if they could accomplish this and have this as a frame of reference? So there was no decision made and there has been no decision made on what the search timeline will be, because to be perfectly honest, until you have a conversation with the consultant, you, you just don't even know what that, I mean, we may end up having an idea of how that search is going to happen. And that consultant is going to maybe tell us, we're all wet, it's all wrong, we have to do it differently. And, you know, I hope that we are um, open enough to listen to the experts who we've asked to come before us tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to assure you that a decision was not made.
Great, thank you.
Um, I also want to assure you that um, the arrangement I did between uh, Chair Brown and Dr. Navatney was merely to see if it was even a viable option to bring to the board for a conversation. It was not a decision. It is clearly what I communicated to Chair Brown and to Dr. Navatney that at some point um, this needs to come, there needs to be an open conversation like we're having tonight. Um, but I wanted a board member to have had some conversation um, with Dr. Navatney to even determine whether it was a reasonable possibility. It didn't make sense for me to bring someone here if there wasn't even a, you know, a, a hope and a prayer that it would
Yeah.
be a possibility. So in that sense, I want to assure you that we are working, I'm working very hard to make sure that we comply along the way with our policies. Now to the other ones I can't speak to and I, I, Chair Brown, I don't know if you want to deal with that at this time or at a later time.
No, I'll answer them. Um, as long as we can just get through this and and get to our consultants, we're making them wait, but uh,
Chair Brown, before you get going there, I did want to make sure with regards to one of her allegations on that, make sure you don't go on anything that um, is in the topic of the former employee realm, because that's still an open issue.
Okay. Um, to Director Pyros, uh, never offered anybody anything uh, for a, a job as superintendent, Newburgh School District. It's not my my role. Um, it's, it's a board decision. Um, so that didn't happen. Uh, number two, just got commented on, we're still uh, with our superintendent, our past superintendent um, is, is still in the works, you know, so many legal things there. And I did speak with Derek Brown never about being superintendent. I just asked him if he was willing to um, uh, be a, like an intern situation and he said no. And uh, and that was, we had a conversation just in general about how things were going at that time. But he was not offered the, the superintendent's job. Um,
But he was offered the interim superintendent's position.
Yes, I asked him if he was willing to do that and he said, no, he wasn't interested in doing that.
But, but what's, what's that? Um, did you have the authority by the board to do that?
Well, we needed somebody to, he would be the most natural person in line as being assistant superintendent to step in.
Rebecca, there's a difference between asking someone if they would do sign and offering them a position. Those are two different things.
Yeah, I was just asking if he was interested. Um, and we had a nice conversation, you know, uh, Dr. You know, Derek Brown's a great guy. Uh, and and it was a tough day. It was a uh, obviously uh, something he's not interested in doing, so. Yeah, uh.
Well, I just, I just wanted to understand it because um, I wasn't aware of even new, you know, um, of, of the new direction that you spoke about, that the board wanted to go into on, on a uh, interview you gave to the, to the media that you, that the reasons um, we, we let Joe go is because the board is moving in a new direction. And I, I wasn't aware of any new direction, uh, you know, it wasn't a specific board motion that we've come to. So I, I just wanted to be part of the, the decision making and to remind you that, that there's seven of us on the board, that we need to be part of the decision making.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, what I'd like to do at this point um, is to identify um, Rob Hess from B T C and give him an opportunity to kind of respond to some of those questions that I outlined for you, as well as for him to share whatever information he'd like to share with you about how he and his firm would conduct an executive search for the Newburgh School District. Hi, Rob.
Hello, good evening, good evening. Thanks for um, inviting me to, to be here this evening. And I have a um, a few slides that I can show you and I'm gonna put those into the um, the chat there for the host panelists and if so, hopefully they can, they can get there. Yeah, so you should be able to, to download those, but I'm gonna share these and if, and if you want any of these um, to be shared out with public, that, that's fine. Um, so I just want to be able to, to go through this. And so I'm gonna share my screen here and go through all of the, the Zoom fun things that we get to do nowadays. So you should be able to see the screen. Hopefully, uh, title slide, is that working for everybody?
Yes.
All right, great.
I must, excuse me, I, I am legally blind and so I would appreciate if you would read the slides.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that. There's not a ton of text on them, so um, so I will, I will read, read the slides as we go through. So the um, the superintendent search, here's the questions to address. I wrote them down. Lisa reviewed them, so I'll just go through them. Um, again, just for, so everyone can, can see them in writing. There is a, I was asked to develop a timeline for an efficient and effective search. Uh, number one, number two, the challenges to completing the search by mid-January and how those challenges would be addressed. What, number three, what process would you use to obtain community input? Number four, how would you develop the qualities and qualifications to be used in the search? And five, how would you encourage candidates to apply for the position? So I'm just gonna start by addressing these questions and then um, I'll lea- I'll leave some, I, I was given twenty minutes. I'll only take about ten minutes of time to do this and then have time for you to ask me questions you might have. And so, but if someone does have something they want to jump in, feel free. Okay. So the essential thing on the, the central question for the timeline is what's the timeline for an efficient and effective search? And the first thing that I'd like to share is that a- any decision that's made should be driven by the purpose. So if the board um, says that we'd like a, a, a more rapid search, then that's something a firm can accommodate. Uh, and if they want a longer search, that's also something that can be accommodated. So it should be driven by the purpose. And it's really a matter of trade offs, because if you do a search that's uh, that's quicker, there's some things that that you give up and there's also some things you gain. So what I'm gonna do is give you a, give you what uh, I would have proposed for a timeline for each search, for a longer traditional one and then for a compressed timeline. So a traditional search that takes more time is uh, more expensive in terms of time and money, several months usually. And they typically attract more applicants and allow more time for community input and feedback. A shorter compressed search has a shorter timeline, attracts more local candidates in general and also helps the district move forward with the work of educating students and building community uh, more rapidly. And be, the, a search, whatever your status quo is for the district, whatever space you're in right now, the search extends that as uh, people um, continue to, to process higher, the hiring of a new superintendent. So this next slide is just a list of activities that I would recommend if you're gonna do a compressed search. So the first thing obviously would be to award a, a contract. And I put December seventh, because that's today's date, but um, obviously you want to be able to do this as soon as possible because every day you wait is the day that um, you're missing the opportunity to, to, to do activities. The first thing I would do is, would be appoint a superintendent subcommittee, a search committee comprising of no more than three members of the board. And those are the people that I'd be working with regularly to, to uh, do this process. And whatever three members were selected, I would work with them in a consensus model, which means we would agree, come to agreement on the steps that we take. The next thing um, that I would do is immediately start recruiting candidates. And if we're to, if we had a target of mid, mid-January, then we would be actively recruiting candidates from the moment the contracts awarded until um, you know, I would say the beginning of January sometime. I would also create and post an electronic application. And this would be something that would take about a week to build, but uh, I would build that and also run that. And as you see, that if you're gonna close a search and you're only gonna do it for a few weeks, you really need to um, get out and recruit people to apply for it. I would also encourage and lead the effort to do an electronic community survey. And I would have that open for uh, for about three weeks. And the purpose of this would be to hear from all voices. When we do uh, open comment sessions, you don't hear every voice. Sometimes you only hear the voices that get an opportunity to speak. And those, and and more than, you know, I see there's over two hundred people on this, in this meeting um, watching this. So that's a lot of people that are, that wanna, wanna share their voice. So we would do a survey and I would uh, work with the, the subcommittee to come up with the questions. And we would have opportunities for community members, parents, students and staff members to be able to uh, share their thoughts and give input. And, and then we would, I would review the data from that survey and from that data, develop the qualities and qualifications and present those to the board at a regular board meeting. The next step would to be, to screen all the applicants that applied with the subcommittee. And then I would bring the top three candidates to the board in executive session by January eleventh. So again, this is a really fast timeline. The next thing would be to offer uh, the successful candidate a uh, the, the contract. And it's also important to remember what Lisa mentioned earlier, that there is a sixty day notice. So um, now some dis- some, some districts will waive that six, sixty day notice. So it doesn't necessarily have to be sixty days, but it could be up to sixty days between when someone gives notice to their district to come over to Newburgh. So that is a compressed timeline. And I would also advocate that if you're gonna do a quick timeline, that the, the search is done in executive session. So, because, and it's a closed search. And the reason why I would say you'd want to do it that way is that you would get uh, more candidates to apply. is that you would get more candidates to apply if it was a closed search. And I've been a superintendent for nine years, and I know how risky it is to apply to be a superintendent in another district, make it all the way to the finals, be in public, not get that job, and then go back to your district. And it's it's risky. And just just ask anyone who's an Oregon Ducks fan how they feel about losing their coach right now. So it's it is a thing that that if you did a compressed timeline, I would advocate that you do a closed search. Districts do closed searches on occasion. I've been involved in some of those where the board does all the interviews and announces who their next superintendent is. So I would advocate for that if you're doing a compressed timeline. So I'm gonna move on now to the traditional timeline and as and after I share this one, we'll open it up to questions. So a traditional timeline, you've got more time to award your contract. I would still have a superintendent subcommittee of no more than three members. And and obviously, you wanna, you would need a subcommittee because these, you know, I'd be contacting you in regular regularly to talk about what we need to do and get your thoughts on things. And we don't want any serial board meetings, so we would, I would work with that subcommittee appointed by the board. We would also then begin recruitment of candidates, and again, we'd have more time, so you'd get about 10 weeks to recruit. We'd also have the the creating and posting electronic application, and we'd have more time to collect applicant applications. I would also, with the longer timeline, we could do a staff survey, an electronic staff survey that's tailored to staff members and ask some questions that you wouldn't necessarily have on a community survey. And then we'd also do a community survey. We would analyze that data. And then we would also, one of the questions on the survey would be asking people if they wanted to be part of a an interview panel. And so we would select some members, the subcommittee would select some members to be part of the interview panel. And we would work on that at the end of February, review all the survey data, present that to the board. And then activities would continue in March by screening all the applicants with the panel, which would include the the subcommittee on the board, and then bring the six to eight candidates to the to do the next round of interviews. Have a community visitation day in April.
Mr. Hess, I think it would be really helpful if you could start saying the dates, because I think you're skipping some dates that need to be heard by particular individuals.
Okay, so is there a particular date that you felt like I missed? Or you, how far back should I go?
You'll at least need to go back to the last slide.
Okay. So I'll go back to this one, the this one right here with the traditional timeline.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay, so this is awarding the contract, December 14th, you'd have more time to do that. Appointing a superintendent subcommittee, you'd wanna do that the same meeting that you appointed awarded the contract, choose, select three members of the board to be on the subcommittee. Recruitment of candidates would be from December 14th to February 25th, so that's about 10 weeks to recruit candidates. Create and post an electronic application from January 14th to February 25th. That's about six weeks. Run a staff survey, electronic survey, so all voices get heard from January 10th to January 28th. Run a community survey from January 28th to February 14th. Another three weeks there. Then you would have your subcommittee, the superintendent subcommittee would determine which members of the community and or staff be part of a panel. You'd choose and select a number of people that would be determined by that subcommittee. And you would from February 18th to March 1st, that's the window you'd wanna get that group solidified. Then we'd need to review all the survey data to determine the desired qualities and qualifications. And I would present, I put March 1st as a date. I don't know if you have a board meeting at that on that date, but the first board meeting in March, we'd wanna present that. Then you would need to do some applicant screening by community and staff, so you'd have that group that you determined that would screen the applicants. And then we would interview the top group of six to eight by that committee. I have a March 12th date on that, and that would, that's a Saturday, I believe. Then we would have a community visitation day with the top three finalists, April 5th. Again, these dates are negotiable, but I'm just giving you a ballpark of when it would be. And then you you would end the the experience by interviewing the top three candidates by the board in executive session. And and that would include reviewing the reviewing community feedback from the visitation day. Then we would go into negotiating a contract. Now, as you can see, that's that's a mid-April, starting now is fairly, is a fairly aggressive, you know, timeframe. You know, Albany, who is is in in a search right now, I think their applications close this week in December, and they're gonna be announcing their superintendent sometime in in April as well. So as you can see, the the traditional timeline has more activities and involves more people. So the new superintendent would assume duty July 1. So you would have the issue of I know David Navate, if you decide to to have a David take on this this job, he said 60 days. So so you would, there would need to be something done in these interim times if you went traditional. So my final slide here is just Lisa asked me to address the challenges and opportunities or of of this going a little of doing the compressed timeline. Challenge number one, I was asked to look into is community involvement and participation. And I would address this by conducting a community-wide survey available to the public that all community members would be encouraged to to participate in. And in this way, all voices in the community could be equitably heard, and this data would be used to determine the qualities and characteristics you're looking for. It sounds like you've already scheduled some community listening sessions with the board. We would use those as well, but I would still recommend that we do a community-wide survey. I think that's really important in your case. Second challenge is recruitment. And as a former superintendent in Oregon for nine years and a university instructor, and currently I do executive coaching through Breakthrough Consulting, I've run some searches. And I know a number of qualified leaders who might be interested in this position. I would personally reach out, invite them to apply. If you're doing a compressed search, you're gonna have to actively recruit people to apply as opposed to just hoping people do. And that's exactly what I would do to to try to build you a strong pool of candidates. And I would also, under the recruitment bullet there, is is advocate for a a closed search in executive session, so that you would have additional candidates apply who might not apply if it was an open search. So the opportunities of doing a doing a more rapid search is you go back to business quicker in terms of getting someone to start. You don't have to wait till July 1st. And so that could be an opportunity for you, and then also the cost is, it's more it, there's less cost in terms of time and and resources and and money, search first, search firm time, community time, board time with that type of search. So I'm, it's time for questions now. Yeah, go ahead.
Awesome. I, if you could go back to the slide previously, when you talked about the compressed session. It talked about it being done virtually.
Yeah, do you wanna, do you want me to show you the activities on that one? Is that the one you would like? Or?
That that's the one. I think we just missed the virtual part. Oral format.
Yeah, the a virtual, a virtual format so that so that you're doing the interviews and the reference checks and and all of those things virtually, yes. I'd recommend that for for a for the compressed timeline.
Dave, will we be going around asking questions or just throwing them out? How would you like to proceed?
Let's do a time check. How much time do I have, Lisa?
I believe you still got about 10 minutes. 10, 10, 12 minutes.
All right, so I've turned off the slides now. And hopefully you could download a copy of those and get yourself a copy if you if you'd like to read through them later. But and also the board members, you got a copy of the proposal along with a reference sheet on on my work. And hopefully you were able to see that, too.
Dave, would you like to go around, or would you want us to just put them out? How would you like? I'm sorry, I'm asking Mr. Chair Brown how he would like to proceed with board members asking questions.
Um, I think we'll just, I'll just go ahead and call on you then. And if you have a question, go ahead. Brandy, go ahead. You're up there first.
Oh, wait, awesome. I've I've got quite a few, but I'll just limit to a couple so everyone can get a chance at this point. I, this is the first time I've ever heard of a compressed superintendent search, and I'm blown away at the lack of transparency and community involvement. I don't even know why would we be considering such a rush move? It clearly, somebody has a timeline in mind for this, and there's a reason they're trying to get somebody in by mid-January. I think it's absolutely possible, but do I think it will be a viable candidate? No, I do not, because I also have concerns around what candidate is available to immediately take a superintendent position mid-year. That's a concern. My other concern is that it would be potentially done in executive session, so there's absolutely no transparency for the community. And the other question, too, I have is why a three-member subcommittee? You've got three members of a very divided board, and you're leaving it up to them to decide who the final three candidates. So as a board, we would only have a chance to review three candidates for a permanent superintendent position. It would be only community involvement via survey, which not everybody has access to that technology. I didn't see any staff input whatsoever in that compressed timeline. And it is incredibly clear that that is not what is best for our district. It's not what's best for our students, and it will certainly not give us a deep pool in which to pull a candidate from. My concern is that you seem to have had a very limited amount of experience with search firm, with searching for superintendents in large diverse districts like Newburgh. From your very vague proposal, it was difficult to tell. Can you please talk about what districts you've worked with recently of our size and demographic in the state of Oregon?
Yeah, so Director Penner, you cover a lot of territory there, so I'll just I won't try to address all of those questions, except for the fact that that I started this consulting company three years ago. And I've had contracts with with multiple districts in terms of a lot of different services. And last year was the first year I did executive searches. And I've never done this, the side, a district your size. I did an executive search for for Orva, which is the the largest online school district and school in Oregon. And and those, the references I put there, those are all people I've worked with that know my work. And you're, you know, I gave you all their contact number, so you could contact them to to learn about me. I'm not gonna you know, you're gonna know more about me from talking to people I've worked with. So in terms of, I was asked to put together something what a compressed timeline would look like. And then also, I threw in the example of what a traditional one would be. And I have been a superintendent. I've been involved with searches from the superintendent lens and angle, so I know what those are like. And when we talk about the three sub, the 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 subcommittee, the subcommittee doesn't decide everything, and all of this is open to what the board decides. If the board says, you know what, we don't trust each other, we want all seven of us making every decision, then that's how it's done. So, you know, I don't go into working with districts saying we have to do it this way or that way. I work with the district and how they wanna, they wanna work. So I hope that answers your question. But, you know, I put it out there as a, as, you know, my thought was that if if the seven of you decide on three people that you trust to be more involved, then that's great. I'll work with the three. If you as a group say, you know what, y'all wanna be involved, and then that's how we would do it. If I was selected.
Okay, thank you. Trevor DeHart, do you have anything to to ask?
Yeah, I think he he answered the one question that I had. Thank you, Rob.
Director Pinion, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, my initial one question is how would you define equity? Because even in the electronic survey, that's not equitable in terms of the community that we serve, because not everybody can access technology. So I would like to know, how would you define equity?
I'm glad you asked that question. I actually, the first book I wrote was called Excellence, Equity, and Efficiency, and How to Survive the Triangle of Attention. So I've I've done a lot of, you know, studying equity before equity became a buzzword in Oregon. You know, I wrote that book almost 20 years ago. And I would define equity as meeting needs. So whatever, if we talk about the, if we're talking about student equity, equity for students, that's defining the needs and meeting those needs. So if the, if a, if someone needs something translated, you translate it. Some somebody needs more time, you provide more time. If, you know, there's equity in terms of disabilities, there's equity equity in terms of race. It's a very broad term that's used to 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 paint a lot of of things. And so whenever someone wants to talk about equity, I always ask, what what type of equity do, are we gonna talk about? Are we gonna talk about poverty? Are we gonna talk about language? Are we gonna talk about disability, race, etc.? So I do believe that a a survey where people can state their their thoughts and opinions is more equitable than a public session where people sign up to talk. But I think the more you can do, the better.
Since you touched on language, what languages does your consulting firm deal with? Because there is a Spanish-speaking community that I would want this information to to be accessible to them.
Yeah, so what we, what I would do is is contact you or whoever at the district works with the the Spanish-speaking community. And when I was superintendent Lebanon, we had, we had people that did outreach to the the to the community and Spanish-speaking community, and and we would work with them on whatever whatever initiative we were doing to do the outreach to them so that they could have access that everyone else was getting.
Thank you for that. And with that information, I also think that the compressed timeline would not work for our district, because the holidays are important culturally, and it would not be a good time to receive feedback from the community.
Okay, thank you. Director Shannon, do you have anything to ask?
Uh, yeah, Rob, with the compressed timeline, about how many candidates would you expect the subcommittee to be interviewing?
Well, I I think if you were, if you were to get five to six in that group, that would be, that would probably be a good number in terms of that kind of timeline. So, you know, as quick as that that was, I would say you wouldn't probably see more than 10.
Okay, and then, I guess, so what you said about doing a closed search made a lot of sense. People don't want to communicate to their employer that they want to leave go to a to greener pastures. Is there a reason, would you also, for the extended timeline, would you also do a closed search there? It sounded more like it would be an open search, and if so, you know, not have that same obstacle to gain quality.
Well, most, most superintendent searches, traditional ones are are open, right? Where the community wants to see who the finalists are and and give their feedback. Some districts decide to do closed searches, and they they don't open them, even if they're taking longer to to find that person. So that really is a board decision whether you want an open or closed search. I've been involved in in both, and I can tell you that, you know, if you're a successful superintendent somewhere and you're looking for a new opportunity, there, you really have to think twice if you're gonna apply for an open search, because there, you know, you know, you could make it to the finals and then and then not get that job, and then your community's thinking that 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 you don't wanna be. your community's thinking that, that, that you don't wanna be there and that's not necessarily the case. So, so it's um, it's a point of debate for sure that you have to think about.
So I guess my question be, would be, why would you not do a closed search for both the compressed and the, the extended?
Well, like I, um, I, for illustration purposes, I did one of each just to give you the options so that you know that you do have choices and, and how you wanna, and how you wanna run it. Um, would I, would, would I recommend a closed search? And if you're going a longer timeframe, it would depend on the, the type of candidates you were looking for. So I think you would get more qualified candidates with a closed search. That, I believe that.
Thank you, Rob. And I just want to apologize for uh, the tone of some of the questioning that you received there tonight. I was very.
No, it's no problem. Hey, like, you know, I say, I um, I've been a, I was a superintendent for nine years. I, it's, I know the drill. I have no problem with people. Uh, this is uh, democracy and work at its finest forms.
Yeah, but we should all try to be cordial to each other. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Uh, Director Pyros, do you have any questions?
Yes, would this be a Oregon State um, search or were you going to uh, go nationwide?
Yeah, if, if it's compressed, I mean, we'll, we would post it, you know, Nate, I use um, in addition to the, the regular systems that we have in Oregon to, to get the jobs out there. I've also used uh, Indeed and ZipRecruiter to post jobs on and, and I was able to recruit some people from, from Texas and Arizona for some really high, high-quality jobs in Oregon last spring. So uh, those systems do work to attract people from outside of Oregon. So I would use those, those venues as well to recruit, yes. Whether or not we would, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I would, I would just say, you know, um, it, it is gonna be harder to, to find people this time of the year in terms of um, it's not necessarily the time of year that people, although actually if you're looking to move to a new position, you do start looking about this time of year. This is when the superintendent jobs come open. But with a small window during holiday break, it's, it's uh, you know, I would, whoever you select as a search firm would have to do a lot of outreach.
And wh- when you talk about the three-member um, subcommittee, would they be the ones who would um, read the, the resumes or the applications and make the decision from that of who they're going to interview? Not, not the entire board or?
In, yeah, Dr. Pyros, we could, we could do it either way, right? Um, I've been involved in searches where the larger board said, hey, work with this group, a smaller group to, to narrow it down to the top, final three, and then the whole board will get involved. But if, if your board wants to be involved to look at everything that got turned in, I can set it up that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Director Powell, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I got one. A lot of my questions were already answered. Um, but I do, do you have a, a, a general idea of the price difference between the short term and long term?
Yeah, the um, what I, I, the one I quoted you, it's based on the number of activities, right? So the, I, I, I believe the um, you know, kind of the, the, if you're doing an interim search, it's gonna be less. If you're a compressed timeline, you know, it'll, it would be, you know, under 10,000. And if you're gonna do a longer one, you know, it, 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 it would depend on like, hey, we want both surveys. We want you to be here for the community um, day when we work with the people. We, we want you working with the full, all-seven-member board instead of just three. It kind of would, um, that would depend on, on kind of what services you, you order. But search firms for generally um, for searches of this nature will be 20, $25,000 for the longer traditional search with all the activities.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Rob, I have one question for me. Again, uh, a lot of those were answered uh, already. So when we're trying to bring somebody to, to Newburgh at this time in a difficult uh, political climate, a, a difficult time for us as a district, um, are, do you feel like we can bring in candidates that will uh, be interested in coming here um, to a difficult uh, difficult job, a hard job, a job that's gonna require um, probably something different than they've ever had to do before?
Um, what I would do is, is I would start reaching out to people that I've known and worked with that I believe could do this job and, and ask them if they're interested and, and encourage them to apply. So my job, if you were to hire me, would be to get you um, high-quality candidates who are, are, who, who could, who are willing to do the job and, and want to do the job.
Okay, thank you. Well, we appreciate you very much, uh, taking the time to put all this together. Um, uh, I, I know uh, uh, that takes a lot of hours of work, so we really appreciate that. Um, I think as uh, moving forward, we'll um, I'll go back to uh, to Lisa Fryley. Lisa, do you have any more questions for, for Mr. Hess?
No, it sounds like we've got, um, everybody's had a chance to ask some questions. Um, and if there's nothing, no other questions that you'd like to ask, I would suggest that we move on to our next um, uh, consultant, um, Doug Nelson.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask, if I could ask one more question, Rob, before Lisa. Um, if we did the compressed search and we got to the end of that process and we decided that um, we, we did not get the caliber of people that we wanted to choose from, um, and we've decided that we wanna just extend the search process, what would that look like contractually? Could we design the contract to accommodate that?
Yeah, you could. Yeah, I mean, that um, there's been districts that have done that. They went out, they didn't um, they, you know, I've um, Eugene has done, they're in their second year of interim because during COVID, they just didn't feel like, you know, let's um, we wanna go out right now. So, so it's, it's, it's possible to extend that. You just need to be able to have um, someone that is kind of that sit-in superintendent that you talked about earlier in the meeting, that's, that you're working with to, to uh, to help you on those, those timeframes. So yeah, that, that would definitely be, be possible.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question, Dave?
Yeah, you bet.
Um, thinking of, you, you brought up a good point. What time will this require of our district office staff?
Well, uh, one of the reasons you hire a firm is so that there, they can keep going with their regular work during this time. So there would be some, some, you know, asks of, of people in the district, but um, all of the work that I described would be done by, by, you know, my firm.
Like what, what kind of asks? Just, just so.
Like uh, like um, Director Penner, when she, Penya, when she mentioned um, you know, hey, how we're gonna do outreach to the Spanish communities. Like, I'm not gonna just go in and think I know how to do that. I would talk to someone at the district that, that, that is connected to ask them, hey, what's the best way? Do, do we do this? Do we make phone calls? Do we have a meeting? Um, you know, that, that sort of thing. So.
Um, Chair Brown, I still have a list of questions. It seems like we're not gonna get to them tonight. Would you like those sent an email with, to Mr. Hess with the board CC'd on those? Blind copied, actually?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I think, I think if everybody could uh, you know, take that time, uh, you know, more questions, uh, it'd be easy for us to get those to him. So yeah.
Okay.
Those up and we'll, we'll get those to him. Um, so you bet.
Um, Board Member Penner, if you would like me to facilitate that um, by putting all questions into one email so that Mr. Hess just has, so Rob just has one email. So if board members have questions, if you want to, all of you have received an email from me at this point, at some point. Um, I think I've reached out and touched all of you electronically. Um, so I should be in your um, email uh, piece. So if you could just email them to me, I will turn around and give them um, to Rob and to, if you have some for the next um, consultant as well. I do have one question for you, Rob, and I have to confess, I should have read through the entire proposal and I didn't get it done because I was working on some other stuff. You might mention this in your proposal, I don't know. Um, but it is not unusual for um, executive search firms to include some um, satisfaction, um, some commitment to a, a good fit and a stick on a superintendent candidate and a hire. And then if it goes south at some point um, in a window of time, some um, some sort of, I, I, warranty is the wrong word. Uh, often firms will say, you, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
The search fails, even though you fill it within a window of time, you cut, you offer the client an opportunity to.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, Lisa. I mean, that's something that, you know, what I, what I sent you was a proposal, not a contract. So um, what you would, what you would do if you decided to work with me is to kind of write out those things that you, that you're interested in. Um, Lisa, and as attorney, you can be able, you can do that. And then you and I can go back and forth on what that would look like and, and come, come to an agreement. So it would make it part of the contract, however, however you wanna do that. And you'll find that, that um, I'm good to work, I'm very communicative, I'm good to, I'll, I'd be good to work with. And I would love a chance to get to know you and uh, um, you know, through this process and, and help you find um, your next leader there.
Thank you very much for uh, giving us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next um, proposal and um, presentation will be by Doug Nelson from McPherson and Jacobson. And hopefully I got that right, Doug.
You did. Lisa, thank you very much. Um, uh, thank you for this opportunity to talk with you about the services of McPherson and Jacobson um, and um, and, and for me to go through our process on selecting uh, the next superintendent for Newburgh. And I wanna thank you. Being a school board member is a great service. I'm a current school board member. I have been a school board member. Uh, this, uh, I was a school board member for High Desert ESD for um, almost two terms. And a, I'm currently on the board of uh, the Columbia Gorge ESD. While I was uh, on the board of um, uh, High Desert ESD, I served Central Oregon on the OSBA board and was fortunate enough to be the OSBA president uh, in 2016. Um, my resume was not in the proposal, so I apologize for that. I don't know why the firm didn't put it in there. But um, I sent a copy to Lisa and it gives you a little sense of who I am and what my background is. I've been involved in public education for over 50 years, 19 as a superintendent. Um, I retired from the Ben Lapine School District uh, seems like yesterday, but it was 13 years ago in 2008. Um, I've been involved in a lot of different aspects of public education. Um, and besides being a, a, a search consultant, I also worked with the University of Oregon in their su- uh, principal preparation program and have been doing that since 2013. So I've been involved in a lot of different aspects of education, not only in our state, uh, but in the state of Washington. I currently reside in the Dalles, Oregon. So not very far. Um, I'm, I didn't prepare a, a uh, uh, a PowerPoint. I didn't think that was appropriate, given the instructions I received. So I apologize for not providing uh, that inform, uh, providing something like that. But let me start by saying, our search process, our, is very transparent. And I was reading on your website a statement from Chair Brown that the board seeks to have a transparent process. And that is our process. The McPherson-Jacobson process has been involved with over 800 searches. Um, and we have had a very strong track record. 80% of the people we've uh, worked with boards to play superintendents um, have remained in their job for uh, their first five years. 50% for 10 years and fif- 40% for 15 years. We have, we believe in our process because what we do, and I'll speak to that, is we match the candidates to the community. And we do that through a very deliberative uh, process that is thorough and detailed and was laid out in our proposal. I'm gonna jump to something that was asked by Lisa. We have a guarantee. Period. Uh, if in fact, um, you hire our firm and use all five of the phases of our search and the person selected does not uh, is not, leaves within the first two years, we will do the search again um, at no additional cost except for advertising and any other incidental expenses. There will be no cost to the, for um, our time. We believe so strongly in our process that um, we will pick, we will work with you to, for you to select a, a high-quality leader that fits your community and will uh, uh, continue on and, in, within Newburgh. Let me talk about our process a little bit. If you have our proposal in front of you, and I don't know if you do or not, but um, we outlined it very simply by saying um, our transparency is on page six of that, if you wanna look at that. But um, I'm gonna go through the phases um, very quickly because that is our timeline. Our timeline's on page 14 of the proposal, if you wanna look at that. Phase one, very simply, we start working on the process. And that's working with you as a board. We developed the characteristics of the new superintendent. That's with you. And I'll come back and talk about that as I respond to a different question. We'll establish the timeline. And I will, as I'm talking, the timeline will emerge. I'm not gonna be specific on dates. I'm gonna be more generic because the specific dates come when working with you as the board and looking at your calendar and what is needed. And we'll determine advertising venues in that first uh, phase. We'll determine a point of contact for the district. It's usually a board secretary, but since um, right now you don't have a board secretary, maybe Greg, he gets to come back and do that as the point of contact. We've got a very specific uh, duties for that person that are outlined and we give that person kind of a checklist of things that need to be done and when they need to be done. Also determine who the best board contact is, whether it's typically the board chair, but the board, board chair may say, I'm too busy. I'd rather have somebody else do it. So it keeps the communication flowing. So that's, and then we would look at um, at where we'd like to advertise and um, and then start to put together the brochure. Um, the way I'm looking at it is that first phase would be um, working with you could happen before the Christmas break. Um, but then the uh, pulling together some of the information would start to uh, occur and probably be ready for posting right after the break. I'm gonna be honest with you, a, a search to be, have somebody on um, um, selected by mid-January from our, our process will not work and we do not believe in shortening it, that process in order to meet that timeline. And we believe that because uh, the uh, attracting high-quality candidates will be extremely difficult in, in that short term. Anyone who you would want to have on board by the begin, by the middle of January um, is either not a si- sitting superintendent, Lisa spoke to the 60-day rule, um, or um, uh, is, would be cut, having to leave a contract uh, somewhere else. And the high-quality candidates are not going to look to be leaving at this point in time, to be very honest with you. Yeah. And if you want a high-quality person, um, I think it's in your best interest to go with a longer-term search, whether it's us or uh, Rob. Um, second thing we start to do is to meet with stakeholder groups. And I'll come back to that, but the stakeholder groups would be in early January, first or second week of January, probably the second week. Um, simply because people are, start to become very distracted at this point in time. They start to think about family. They start to think about celebrations. They start to think about um, uh, the holidays. And so starting to bring people together between now and um, Christmas or immediately during the Christmas break is pretty darn tough. People are distracted. They've got priorities. Stakeholder groups would include community groups that you as a board would identify. We usually ask board members to identify three to five uh, folks within the community. We put together a couple of um, stakeholder groups. Um, usually 10 to 12 to start to get a feel for the community. It might be like your mayor, it might be the Chamber of Commerce, might be representatives of other groups. But it people you would want to bring into the process. We would also then reach out to specific groups. We would reach out to the Latino community. And uh, we'd want to make sure that we have a process for that. We would provide, work to provide our translators to help in that. We would then also look internally, having stakeholder meetings with the central office staff, building uh, leadership principals, uh, vice principals, teachers, classified. vice principals, teachers, classified staff and students. And all those stakeholder groups, we would ask four basic questions. What do you like or what are the strengths of your community? What do you like or what are the strengths of your school district? What are the issues that the new superintendent would be facing? And what are the qualities and characteristics that you would want in the new superintendent? And I'll come back to that in a little bit. I would gather all of those material, present you a summary, so you would know what your community is saying. We would also make that available to candidates, so they would know. We would also then, for people who cannot attend those meetings, provide in both English and, and Spanish, an online survey. Ask the same four questions. We'd have it up for about a week. We would gather those data. I would summarize that for you again. But you would then see all of the online comments with names redacted and any inappropriate language. But you'd see everything that they have said. We'd also provide that to the candidates. So that's an important part of the process. That would happen early to mid-January from my perspective. We'd select a closing date, probably, nah, I'm going to, I'm working with another district right now, kind of year in the same timeframe. We picked Valentine's Day. We thought that was a pretty good day. So probably mid-February, we, we'd look at that for the closing. That would give us time to do the advertising in January. We usually like to advertise in, for about four weeks. We'd use the in-state advertising venues in our proposal. We also suggest that we do A A S A, which is the American Association of School Administrators. We also top jobs, which is the Edweek portal. We would then also look at the Black and Latino organizations that have national reach. And so we would get that advertising. We would post it on our website. And we have many, many people from around the nation registered on our website. They check it regularly. Our website gets over 200,000 hits a month. So you, we get a lot of view that way. We also then would send the posting to our 125 consultants nationwide. And they would contact people they know that might be interested. We would also start our outreach within the state of Oregon. I would work with people I know and have contact with, with, within the state to start to build a applicant pool for you. Once it closes, we gather all the applications. We have a standard application. We, I would review every application that comes in. Our team would, probably Steve Louder would be working with me. Steve is another search consultant. He's been a 30-year superintendent. He happens to be working with another board today, this evening. And he's actually doing the Albany search that was mentioned earlier. So we would review those and we vet them. Every applicant we go through and we do what we like to call three deep. I may get the reference to, a reference and I will call that reference. Then I'll say, can you give me two or three people that might know this candidate? It can speak to their qualifications. One of the things about doing a search over the holidays, I started working on, for another district on a applicant today. And he listed his, it happened to be, he listed his supervisor for his last job. So I called the number that was given. It was disconnected. And I finally found out that that supervisor is now in Midland, Texas. So people move around and numbers change. So it takes time to track people down to make sure that we get those, we get that information. I would vet those candidates. I would then, one of the things we would, or I, the team would, our team would vet it. We get the top three. We ask those top three to do a three-minute video interview, answering some specific questions like a little bit about their leadership and what they would do in the first 90 days. We would have those available for you. And then I would bring to the entire board, we would bring to the entire board the top candidates. We would bring everything you'd like to see, but the board, the entire board would see all of the, of the candidates. We've, we've been looking, districts your size, 15-ish type applicants. Usually there are people who apply for every position that comes up. So there's some that just don't fit. But our job, and that's what's important about the stakeholders group, is to understand your community, understand what the qualities and characteristics you want, so we can start to match those, those candidates to you. This is your search. Now I'm giving you our process. It's your search and you say, well, we don't, we'd like to do it this way. Well, that's great. We can adapt our process because it is flexible. Once the, we usually get to the top three. Once those top three candidates are selected, we recommend a day for each in the district. I call it running the gauntlet. Meet with, meet with the stakeholder groups, have a community forum. And then have a formal interview with you as the board. And then also have an informal time with you as a board, usually around a dinner. And bring their spouse or partner with them so that, this is usually not a single person's decision. It's a family decision. And so we like to bring the partner or spouse with them, so they can get a sense of the community. Maybe go with a realtor to find out what the housing's like, take a look at the schools from a parent point of view, if they have children. So that's our, that's our process in a nutshell. Step five is, phase five, working with you and the board, or you and the candidate, the successful candidate, to set up performance objectives. And then if in fact, that person is, does not, does not last two years, we have that guarantee. No additional cost. And I think you saw our, our fee was about $9,500 and plus expenses for advertising and any other expenses that we might incur, but usually not to exceed that $16,000. I think it was $16,000 that was there. So that's our search process and timeline. Like I said, great difficulty bringing together, trying to do a search by mid-January. People aren't available. People aren't paying attention. I'm not sure how we, might, it would be an outreach, but I think one of the biggest issues with completing a search is getting people to apply at this point in time to leave a current position. If you, it would seem to me, new, it doesn't seem to me, I know Newburgh to have a long and great history as a school district. And people will, will take a look at Newburgh. But asking them to leave in January, especially high quality candidates, is probably a very difficult, if not an impossible task. And I'm, I'm just saying, our process does not lend itself to that quick a search. And like I said, getting a hold of people is real difficult at this time of year. People take off, so. Community input. Let me talk a little bit about, more about the stakeholders group. Stakeholders group, what it does, it starts to build community and bring people together. It's, I told you the four questions we ask. What do you like about or what's the strength of your community? Like are the strength of your school district? What are the issues facing the new superintendent? And what are the qualities and characteristics you're looking for? We ask that of, of a variety of stakeholder groups, both external and internal to the district. Like I said, internally, central office staff, building principals, assistant principals, teachers, classified staff and students. And we can kind of slice and dice that to see kind of different ways to look at within that group. And then the community group and the survey. And that really brings people together to start to be engaged in the process. And then we also use those stakeholder groups and representative of those stakeholder groups during the search process. We usually have a, a committee to help during the process, plus representative of the stakeholder group. And then individual stakeholder groups that we, each of the candidates would meet with during their day here. So they'd meet with community, a community group, or they might, central office administrators, principals, teachers, classified and students. We think that's very important, very open, very transparent. So it really, again, and then the community survey that I talked about, same four questions. And you get all that information to help you, guide you. And so really, the question was asked, and there's not much effort, time and effort on the part of district staff. Because whoever the point of contact is will be doing, that person will be doing a lot of the leg group, leg work to get the groups together, to get the venues where we're going to meet and so forth. For the community people, one of the things we do, once they're identified, we send a personal letter from us to them, inviting them to the community stakeholder group. And that way, it's people that you have recommended. And we try to bring together people, a variety of people across the community into that group. And we handle all of those kinds of things, sending the invitation out. And once we have the venue and, and that sort of thing, sometimes we'll do a luncheon, sometime we'll do an after-work session, could be a breakfast. But it's just bringing people together. Greater Albany did, doing, I think Steve told me 22. That's a lot. Usually it's 10 to 12 total among external and internal is about what we would, would recommend. How do we, developing the qualities and characteristics and skillset for the, basically for the advertising brochure? We like to put together the brochure early on, and that will include information about the district, about the community, so people can get a sense of what, of, of Newburgh. But the qualities and characteristics are board responsibility. And so we can do one of two things. Down and dirty, if you will, the quick and easy is to ask each board member to submit to me and Steve, three to five qualities and characteristics they, that you want as board members in the new superintendent. I would take those, those qualities and characteristics, they'll be overlapped, there always is, and then shape them into a format and a document that I would give back to the point, to the board point of contact to get your consensus. Does this what we want in the qualities and characteristics? So it's an iterative process. You all individually give the, your thoughts. We put it together and what kind of our format goes back to you to say, yes, no, we'd like to look a little differently. We'd finalize it, get it in the brochure. And that brochure then is out as soon as we get all of that finalized. One of the other things in that brochure we will need is salary, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Another process would be for the board to meet in person. And we would do what's called a nominal group technique, where again, you start, we, we would lead you through a process to, at the end of it, would identify conceptually the qualities and characteristics. And I just did this with another district and have developed that into a doc, the qualities and characteristics written up. Just sent it to their, I'm working directly with their board chair, sent it to him. He got it to the, to their board. They've looked at it. Just this afternoon, he said, everybody thinks it's great. And so it's going into our office, our, our headquarters in Omaha. And they're putting together the brochure. It should be out here, probably. We're debating if we want to put it out before Christmas or right after the holidays, the beginning of January. Just because we want to make sure we catch people when they're starting to pay attention. This is the hiring season for superintendents. So we're in round one. It's a good time for you to be out because people are going to start looking. And so that's, that's, that's important because we would want to get your brochure and your information out also in a similar fashion. Last question is, let's see, how did it read? How do we encourage candidates? Well, I talked about our network. We would get that information out to our network of 125 people. We would start with the premise that Newburgh has a long and great history as a school district. I worked with Paula Radich, some of you may have. I had a great respect for Paul. I thought she was a, a great superintendent. And one of the things in that process, how I would intend to encourage people, is to know the district. And that's where the stakeholders work comes in. I would learn so much about what people are proud of about Newburgh and the Newburgh School District. I know you've just passed a bondage and you're doing a lot of work with that. And so that's something that we can communicate. You're coming to a district where that's had strong community support. We would push all of those things. But has been referenced, there's, there's a lot of ferment going on in Newburgh right now and with the Newburgh School Board. Anyone who's paid attention will know that. Anyone who is not aware and Googles the Newport School Board is going to see a lot of issues that are being raised. Therefore, that's something that has, we have to talk about. And we have to talk about how the board works together. The board superintendent relationship is like a marriage. And candidates for a superintendency want to know about the board and how does it work together. So it's incumbent upon you as a board to work together and to show that how you are working together. The process, the hiring of superintendent process, quite frankly, forces you as a board to work together and to come to consensus, if you're going to do the job that you, for your community, for your students and for your school district. And so I think that's one of the things to, that you can do to encourage candidates is how you work together as a board. The last thing is salary. You may be aware that Greater Albany jumped the superintendent salary somewhere between 50 to $60,000. They're offering $220,000 for their superintendent. That's just for the salary. I think to get people's attention, you're going to need to raise your salary. Now, we will do a salary analysis for you. We work with a consultant who has a contract with COSA Confederation Coalition of Oregon School Administrators. So we can tell you what other school districts, just a little bit above you and a little bit below you, are offering in terms of salary and benefits. And that you as a board can then decide how you want to decide, how you want to structure your salary and benefits, at least initially. And we usually like to give, say, a range. Because if you have somebody who's a, a real experienced superintendent and has a good track record, you know, you're going to want to be able to attract them and you're going to want to look at a good, strong salary. That's our process. Those are some of the finer points of how we go about doing this. We would, I welcome any questions. And I know as a board, you will make the best decision for your school district in terms of a selection of a firm to, to do, to work with you to make this your search, to hire the next superintendent. We know that, and like, what we like to say is, quality education for our students come with quality leadership. Quality leadership is stability and sustainability in the superintendency. And we can point to our track record for our firm, nearly 80% of the people we've placed, worked with boards to place a superintendent in the last five years are still on the job. 50% after 10 years and 40% after 15. We have a process that works because we work hard to match candidates to you and your uniqueness of Newburgh. I'll answer any questions. And Chair Brown, you just want to go around the table then, like you did last time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Nelson. Thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate it. So are you ready for questions?
I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. We'll go same direction we did last time. So Director Penner, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for.
And I hope you have a lot of questions for me because you had a lot of questions for the, I'm teasing you.
No, don't worry. I will never be out of questions for anybody. Everybody can attest to that. It's okay. No, I appreciate your, your, the packet, the material that was in the packet was very thorough and I appreciate that. But I do have a couple of questions. They're certainly focused around time. One is your time and the other is district staff time. So my concern about your time is that, you know, will Newburgh get the attention and the time that it needs? Considering that, you know, you're part of a larger nationwide search. And I know you're based in Oregon and very familiar with Oregon. But my concern around the fact that there are multiple superintendents are just happening and will we be able to get the time we need? And then the second part is, in your proposal, you had a chart, which was organized well and it was easy to read. But my concern on it is that there was clearly a lot of staff time that was going to be necessary. And my fear is we just certainly don't have district staff who are able to do that. Is there additional support for that? And would that be an additional cost?
Well, in answer to your first question, if you hire us, even though we're doing other searches, we work together. We work to fit, fit everything together. I have no other job. I'm retired. Um, I'm retired, this is my job. Uh, I do work a little bit for the U of L, but you know, that, that doesn't take a lot of my time. So yes, you will have our full attention. And, um, Steve is doing some searches right now, you will have his full attention. We will meet our timelines and our, um, goals as we set out with you when we set that initial timeline. Second piece is, a lot of that staff time comes down to one person, comes down to the point of contact. And that point of contact, um, yeah, they almost get a second, second job. Uh, it's typically been the board secretary and in many districts, it's the board secretary is also the superintendent secretary. So that person usually ends up with that role. Can also be the communications person for the district. But that person, yes, they have, uh, that chart laid out, everything that they have to do. Beyond that, it's, um, not, uh, it's more asking people to set things up. But it's not a lot of their staff time. And so that's, that's what we've done in the past. There's things we can't as consultants do, we can't, um, uh, we don't have the access to say like the, if you wanted to do the, uh, teachers' union leadership or the classified teachers', uh, uh, classified employees' union leadership, that's something you have to help us do. Picking a place to go, that's something that someone has to do that we can't. But we take care of everything else. I mean, and maybe we ask for some supplies that every district has, but nothing too, too major.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Dehart, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Nelson, you did a, you did a good job, very thorough.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking your time this evening to explain the, the process that you did.
No, thank you very much.
Uh, Director Penya, any questions?
Yeah, um, I want to be fair about the questions I asked, so I am going to ask you the same question. How would you define equity and how is that incorporated in, in how your firm works?
Well, um, our, uh, we had an equi, uh, in our policy or in our proposal, uh, page, I think it's four, my numbered in print, uh, is our equity policy. And, um, uh, Steve and I wrote it for the, for our firm. And we want to look at things through an equity lens. Um, and it, as we look at school districts and hiring superintendents, we want to make sure that, uh, we aren't creating barriers, we're removing barriers, uh, for those candidates. As we move, as we work with communities, we want to make sure that all voices within the community that need to be heard and want to be heard are heard. And that can be, uh, uh, it could be, uh, as you've already mentioned, Latino community. Uh, it could be if you have another language, uh, community, uh, another district we're working with has a large Russian population. So, you know, we'll work with different, uh, groups to ensure that they're brought into the process. If you have a, uh, an active LBGTQ, uh, within your community, that would be something. Um, but it would be, uh, those groups that are traditionally not, uh, in the forefront. We want to make sure they come into the community or into the process. And we have to work with you because you know your community well and who those people are and, uh, who those groups are within your community so that we can reach out to them through you to, uh, bring them into the process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director Shannon, any questions?
Um, so what is the most aggressive timeline that you feel your process could work with?
Well, like I said, typically we like to do a four, um, month, or four, excuse me, four month, four-week advertising. And that advertising we could start right af, uh, we think that people, if it's going to be effective and it's, we're going to use our dollars correctly, uh, that's right after the first of the year. Um, so the first four weeks, we could close it short in earlier in, uh, February. And have, um, let me, let me just take a look, um. Probably close it. I'm going to say February ten-ish. I, I have to look at a February calendar. Give it two weeks, so by the end of February have vetted hopefully the candidates. Bring it to, bring in the candidates to you by the end of February, uh, interviews early March. Just, that's kind of rough off the top of my head without really have to sit down with you because we need to look at what else is going on in your district. But by our process, that would be probably the most aggressive. Two months is put, is kind of what we could do, maybe a little shorter than that. Um, reduce the advertising, but, uh, length, but, um, shorten up when it's, uh, when the closing date is to beginning of February. But yeah, it would, we, we'd have to take a look at it, but we could, you know, two months is about the minimum we could do.
And beyond advertising, what sort of active recruitment would you do in your firm?
Um, like I said, we go through our consultants, uh, we send out the announcement to all of our consultants. We ask them to, um, identify people, uh, uh, in their area. We then also reach out, I work, uh, will work with, uh, COSA, um, their super, emerging superintendent group. We will also, uh, start to work with other people within the, uh, state, um, that I know that, uh, will, would recommend, uh, people for us to go seek out. I can remember, um, you never know how this works, but when I was, um, superintendent in Pullman, Washington, I got a tap in my shoulder, shoulder at the, our annual school board's convention. And it was a recruiter for the Ben Lapine School District. And he said, you need to apply for Ben Lapine, and I said, um, what do you mean? So we will do that, we will find those people that we know of and we will work with, uh, work to reach out to them. So it's just our, our process of going after.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director Pyros, questions?
I don't have any questions, I just thank you for the, for the wonderful presentation and the, um, the, the material we received in our packet. And I would like to ask the, the two student reps if they have any questions. We didn't, we didn't re- remember them in the last time.
Um, all good, thank you, uh, Director Pyros for, um, asking. I don't believe that I have any questions at this moment, thank you for your presentation now.
Thank you.
Just to interject, I put this in the chat about ten minutes ago, but I believe our interpreters are only with us through nine o'clock.
Okay, Director Powell, then do you have a question?
Um, no, I do appreciate, um, though you're coming Doug, and that was a great presentation. And for all the information that you provided for us, it was really helpful, so it was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Mr. Nelson, I just have one question, and you know, you've been a superintendent, uh, really appreciate your presentation, so I'll just, for me, my question was, in your opinion, um, you're pretty aware of Newburgh. We've been through a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know you've done your reading on us, you know, we're divided. Uh, what kind of person, uh, in your, your mind would you go after to, uh, meet our community in a divided state we're in?
I think you're going to need an experienced superintendent who's worked with boards personally. There's an art and a science to working with school boards. Um, there's always going to be conflict, there's going to be conflict on, and disagreements. And a superintendent who has worked with boards through disagreements and, um, conflict, it would seem to me would be, um, would bring a strength to Newburgh. And so I think that, you know, off the top of my head, I think that's the first thing you would want. So you'd want somebody who is experienced and who understands the dynamics of a, uh, school board. Secondly, Newburgh is not alone, it just happens to have a lot of headlines right now. School, uh, boards all over the state, all over the nation, uh, are having tremendous disagreements. This COVID thing is caused all kinds of ferment wherever. And I have to say, uh, of the school boards I'm working with right now, uh, they're divided and they have been. So you're not the only district that has divisions and has disagreements. So the person that you would want is someone with, um, a strong conviction about, um, about their, what the role of public education is in our nation today. Has a strong conviction about our democracy and how a democracy can work because, um, and how a school board needs to come together to represent, um, the many facets of your community. I would think you would want someone who has a strong track record of consensus building, both within the school district employee group and within, um, the community. And I would think that you would want a person that is in and of the community. They not only are just the superintendent, but they believe in the community. They are the, they are the school district to the community because they are the face of the school district. And when I say in and of it, they are everywhere. They are at the chamber meeting, they're at the fifth grade concert at the elementary school. They're at the high school basketball game. They may not have a life and you would ask my wife and my kids where I was most weekdays, evenings during the school year. I was in the school or I was at a, a community event. People knew me as the school district. And I think that's what brings the school district community together. And so you want someone who has a strong track record doing that. I think you, you'll find candidates that have a great deal of knowledge. And I worked with a principal at one time, I had a saying that I always like to look to. It's not what you knows, it's how you knows it. How do you bring your knowledge and your skill and your experience into how you lead? Because you want a person to lead the school district from where you are to provide high-quality education for your students. And it's that leadership that really makes a difference for student learning. All the data and, um, research shows that. So you're talking about not just how you work together, but really the impact upon the, um, six thousand or so students you have in the Newburgh School District. That's off the top of my head, sorry.
I appreciate that, Mr. Nelson, I, I don't mean to cut us short, but our, we're trying to be respectful of our interpreters. And, uh, they're finished up, so, uh, we really appreciate you, uh, taking the time and the effort to put all this together for us. And, uh, thank you very much.
Quite welcome, and I, I guess Lisa will let me know timeline from here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, have a good evening, appreciate the opportunity to talk with you and to tell, tell you a little bit about McPherson and Jacobson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, you guys, like Greg said, uh, we're out of time on our, uh, interpreters. Uh, Lisa, do you have anything to close with there?
No, if you have, um, I'd like to ask each of the board members to send me tomorrow the questions you have, um, that I should, I need to send out to each, either of the consultants. Please identify if you want them to go to just one consultant or two, or if you have specific ones for Rob Hess and different ones for Doug Nelson, so I can get them to the right people. And I will then compile the information and, um, prepare to get it out to you prior to the, um, meeting, uh, on the fourteenth.
Great, thank you very much, Lisa. I don't mean to cut this stop real fast, everybody, we meet again on the fourteenth for our regular board meeting. We will try to get as much information out of that as possible. Uh, please help Lisa with that and, uh, as far as interpreters, thank you very much for standing a few minutes late for us. Greg O'Skell, thank you so much for putting us all this together and, uh,